Still got that buzzing, haven't it? Always got a little buzzing.
That's new, you haven't had that before.
Sounds like it's real high, too. Huh? No, no, I think. Got some type of interference? Just to make sure it's not the light. Nope.
Okay, we're trying to avoid some of those Christmas lights.
Oh, no. If it was Christmas lights, they'd have done it before now.
This is the first time this has happened.
It's almost like it's too high.
There you go.
Did that help?
That did it right there.
Yeah, I think it's, I think your volume was too high. Somebody messed around with volume or something.
That's, that's, that hasn't been good.
That's a lot better. Okay.
Ready, sir? Ready to go?
Yes, let's go.
Okay. We welcome you folks to the city council meeting this evening. We would ask if you have cell phones that you kindly silence the cell phones, unless they disturb the proceedings. We would invite you to rise for the invocation. Heavenly Father, before we begin this meeting, we first invoke thy blessings on all those here assembled. We beg thee to look graciously upon the members of the city council and to grant unto them thy wisdom and grace as they undertake this evening's business. We ask thee to guide their deliberations and decisions of this evening so that everything they do may be done for the greater good of the citizens of the city of Ducoyne and to thy greater honor and glory. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, thy son, our Lord, who lives and reigneth with thee, and the Holy Spirit, one God, forever and ever. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call me into order, roll call.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick, Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Mayor Longe.
Here. Council members, before you are the minutes from the December 12th meeting. I trust you've had a chance to take a look at the minutes. Are there any corrections? Any additions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio.
Yes.
Mayor Longe.
Yes. No need for a treasures report at this time. Before you are the payment of the bills from the previous meeting of December the 12th to the current day. I trust you had a chance to take a look at the bills. Are there any questions about the bills? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio.
Yes.
Mayor Longe.
Yes. There's no need for proclamations. We have one guest who is Brian Ziegler from Clarida Ziegler Engineering to discuss the updates on projects with the firm. Brian, I'll let you have the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, good evening. I know most of you, but a couple that I don't know. So my name's Brian Ziegler. I'm president with Clarida Ziegler Engineering. Our office is in Marion. And as you know, we've performed the engineering for the city for several years now, and we take a lot of pride in that, and we thank you for that, that as well, and we hope that we continue to do the best we can. Here lately, we jumped in this fall, and we were kind of blessed, but also kept pressing to make sure our Division Street project got done. I know that was kind of a war zone for a little while, but we beat the weather here, so it made plowing, I'm sure, for the guys a little bit, a little bit easier, and hopefully got the water main situation done there, too. Couple of the projects we've got going on is the industrial park tank you know we're working on. I've got involved here lately, and as prices has escalated, too, we've looked at the way that we can redesign that. And I've actually got a new cost estimate together, working with Greater Egypt, on actually getting a little bit of a scope change, nothing other than the tanks going to go in for that area. But we can probably save a little over a million dollars, hopefully more by our estimates today. The way things are going in the world, the construction industry, I hate to estimate anything, so let's keep our fingers crossed till we bid that one. But it's also going to save price six months, 12 months on the project because we don't have to have a lot of right of way. With the grants, that's difficult to do with right of way and all certifications they've got. So we're gonna hopefully eliminate some of that. So that's something coming later this winter, early spring. Hopefully, we'll get that moving. I finalized today a revision to a wastewater plant after working with Jeff at the wastewater facility, Water Reclamation Plant, for the, I'm sure we'll be presenting to you at some point here soon for going after Illinois EPA money. There may be some adjustments you guys want to that, but with that Illinois EPA money, as you may know, it's low interest rate, 20-year program, but also some debt forgiveness is what they call it, more like a grant, but they call it debt forgiveness because they're a loan program. So we have that going on that we'll be in touch with you on, too. So here lately, I've been working with Doug, we kind of, and Ruth, and we finalized the MFT program for the streets for 2022, and we're beginning 23, and went over budgets with Ruth and kind of lots of priorities with Doug. So we have that moving along pretty quick. So we'll have some bids come spring, after the first of the year for some material, and then he's looking at one road, maybe doing a little resurfacing in the spring. So that'll be coming forth to you. I think you do have on your agenda tonight a couple of things. One, an agreement with us for, we've already done part of the work already for the MFT 2023, but with that paperwork, it goes to IDOT. We have a resolution, the estimate of costs, and then the engineering agreement. So that's what that is, the engineering agreement down there for us to, what we've done and to continue and finish that project throughout 23. The main reason I was here tonight, I know some of that's kind of normal, every year type things, but to let you know is what's going on with our company. We, we work with a lot of different sub consultants over the years that do specialty work here lately. We back up, as you know, hiring, finding employees is difficult. Finding engineers, they've talked about for 20 years, there's a shortage of engineers coming. Well, we've kind of all hit in a perfect storm here, and it's difficult to find surveyors, technicians, engineers. So one of the companies that I worked with, I've worked with several, but one has gone really, really well. And I was partnering with them, subcontracting to them. We kept going to back and forth, and basically, you know, kind of talked about a partial buyout or how can we partner? And it came down to it, it was just easier for that company to buy me out. And we were on the, to jump to the conclusion, and I'll tell you why, that we're in the tail end of a purchase agreement with Horner Schifrin out of St. Louis. They've got a few offices, O'Fallon, Illinois, Paco Bluff, to actually buy me out because I'm 100% stockholder. And so on your agenda tonight is basically a consent for the contracts we have in place that you're okay with that. They want to see a consent that I'll sign in the contracts and move forward. Now, the why part of that is, is as I'm looking to basically supplement my, our staff, we have 20 people. I hope to have 23 after we do this because of the incentives that I have with this other company, but is having trouble finding young engineers, but experienced engineers. So they are going to help supplement our staff as needed. We'll still use them for some of the specialty stuff that we, one, don't want to take the time to do, like certain traffic studies, intersection design studies. We'll have access to electrical engineers and structural engineers if we, if we need them. But they'll, they'll supplement even some of our, just our civil engineers that do typical municipal projects. But they're basically on board. I kept telling the president, this is, this is why I want to do this, is this access. I'm tired of calling you and having to get a contract every, you know, takes two or three weeks to get a contract. I want to be able to call up this guy, he can come down and, you know, look at this project or run this project. We have five to six project managers in our office that all have a large workload. And they'll still run those projects with some of those younger engineers or maybe experienced engineers from that company to, to pull into our projects. We're 20 people here, just local, locally employed people from South Illinois, and like I said, I, I've got two engineers that are coming out of school and one experienced engineer that I hope that we bring on this spring. This company is what's called Employee Stock Ownership Plan. I guess that's what the P is for. It's a retirement vehicle. So there's not a, just a set number of stockholders in this company. All the employees own some stock. So once I start talking about supplementing my staff, it actually ended up killing about four or five birds with one stone. Is the benefit of that, that I can have access to other engineers. My employees, who've been very faithful to Clarida Ziegler Engineering all these years, are actually, within a year, are going to be able to actually have stock in our company. I like to think that I'm a young man, but as I kind of started taking note of this, something that I really wasn't interested in as far as a transition with me, actually thought this is going to get out of the way for me and my family, and my employees can actually start getting stock. I actually looked into this kind of program for my office, but for 20 people, it's going to be very expensive to set up. So it actually allows them to jump right into that within, within a year or so. That transition's there. Nothing's changing for our Marion office. I'm, I'm under contract. I'm going to run this office. You know, it's just going to report to someone else as far as our own budgets and stuff on our office, but, which I kind of report to myself now because our budgets are made up on how well we've, we've done. So I'll still be your contact supplemented by some other people in our, in our office. The big benefit as we come across something for you, we back up, you'll probably ever never even know, other than come next year, a different name will be on an invoice or a future contract, like at the plant project that we got coming up or something. Other than that, you won't know. We have one engineer that I've already began working with that Jeff's met at the wastewater plant that sees a PhD. So if you're talking about a water reclamation plant, it can get kind of complicated. Me and one other guy in my office has done wastewater plants. I designed the Marion $10 million wastewater plant that's just like the one you got 20 years ago. But of course, that's time consuming for me to just do that. So I pulled in a PhD guy that specializes in this, and he can actually, you know, be my project engineer and help me on that project along with other drafters and stuff. So that's the benefit. You won't really see a change in who's talking to Jeff or Doug or Ruth or, or one of you. It'll just, it'll be our office, but we're going to be part of something bigger now, and it's a good transition plan for our employees. And most of the clients we've talked to have been actually pretty, not only agreeable, but pretty optimistic because they know how many projects they've got, like Ducoyne's got. And the last thing I wanted to do as I'm looking at this is projects bogged down for years because we can't get the work out. And so this is going to kind of help those projects along and give me, actually free me up a little more time of actually mentoring some of our younger engineers and working with our clients and being more involved in projects rather than administrative things in our office. So, so what you have on your agenda tonight is just that. It's a, the deal's not done, it's pending, it's coming forth, but basically, they just want to know that, you know, I've talked to you and you kind of understand, and this is why we're doing it. And then if it happens, you've already consented to us basically assigning the contracts that we've already inked with you now. So a future contract may, would have a different name on it, assuming this thing gets done. So.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. We'll take action here in just a few minutes.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to you, too.
Yep.
Okay. There's no appointments. We'll go to item number nine, which is a public agenda under item A. It's the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, Traffic Study for Stop Signs. Bob, I think Doug Hill and Chief, I think, if I'm not mistaken, at least Doug Hill, has asked for a stop sign to be located at a certain intersection here in Ducoyne.
Two of them, actually.
Two of them. And I, and I want to make you aware of the fact that you can't just arbitrarily put up a stop sign and do an ordinance. And even, even on a city street, you can't do that. You have to have the Illinois Department of Transportation come in and do a study. We've had a policy that we just arbitrarily just put up stop signs all over town, and to be perfectly honest with you, I don't think half the stop signs we got in town's worth their weight. And if there was a ticket written for them, I think that if they went to court, they'd probably get them thrown out of court because we didn't have a traffic study done by the Illinois Department of Transportation. So you've got two requests for two stop signs, and my recommendation to the council would be that we authorize to, for Steve and for Doug to get a hold of the Illinois Department of Transportation, ask for a study for those two stop signs before we move forward with an ordinance. Now, if you don't want to take that advice, that's fine. You just want to go ahead and ordinance it, that's fine, too. But I'm just going to make you aware of the fact that I just do not think that it's, 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 you know, it's not worth the paper it's written on.
So. I don't want to do anything that's going to be pending and cause any kind of legal problems.
Do you understand that, Steve? You know, I, I mean, you know, and we want to help the citizens, don't get me wrong. You know, I mean, there's not, a month doesn't go by that I don't take a phone call or two from people that want a stop sign put up somewhere. But, you know, if we had a stop sign put up wherever a citizen wants a stop sign, every block in Ducoyne would have a stop sign, and you wouldn't have any through traffic. So what I would entertain is a motion that we contact the Illinois Department of Transportation, do a study on these two locations. And what are those two locations, Bob?
One of them's the intersection of North Howard and West Cole Street, and the other one is 207 South Leonard Avenue.
Begging your pardon, Your Honor, we don't have it actually down for a vote, motion to vote.
Okay, so.
So I just say.
So should I bring?
We just asked for consensus.
So is there a general, okay, is there a general consensus among the council that, that we just contact IDOT and do a study on this and then bring it back at a later date?
I'll make that motion.
Well, there's not, we don't have to, we can't vote because it's not, it's not a voteable item. It's just a consensus. Okay, so I think it's the general consensus that we contact the Illinois Department of Transportation for those two locations.
Doug Tony's requested one of these.
Well, and, and, and that's fine. I just think as we move forward on these.
I understand. I understand it totally.
Yep.
And I agree.
I just, you know, we, when we write a ticket, we want to make sure it sticks. Okay, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Item A's Resolution 2022 R1207, it's a resolution authorizing the transfer of contracts from Clarida Ziegler to Horner Schifrin Incorporated for final approval. Brian gave his presentation. Guys didn't have any questions or comments on it? Is there a motion that we move forward with this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Genizio. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Longe?
Yes. Item B's Resolution 2022 R1208, it's a resolution authorizing the contract with Clarida Ziegler for the 2023 Motor Fuel Tax Program for Public Display or Debate. Bob, this is yours. This is your motor fuel tax money.
Yes.
Okay, you want to put a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion by?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Genizio to put it on public display. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Longe?
Yes. And Brian, we'll just move forward, okay? I'll sign the resolution tonight, and Ruth, get it to you either through a fax or email or something to you, and we'll move forward with that. And congratulations also. Okay, item C is Ar- Ordinance 2022-01201. It's ordinance enacting the budget for the fiscal year 2023 for final approval. We put that on public display at the last meeting. There was no public comment. Are there any questions? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Genizio. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Longe?
Yes. This next item is a layover from the previous meeting. It's item D, Resolution 2022 R1201, Resolution Authorizing the Non-Hazardous Waste Disposal Agreement with Prairie Ridge Landfill Incorporated for Sludge Proposal for Final Approval. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Genizio.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Genizio?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Longe?
Yes. Next is Resolution 2022 R1202. It's a resolution authorizing the Business District Redevelopment Agreement between the city of Ducoyne and A.B. Darnell at 231 South Division Street for Final Approval. This is a layover from the last meeting. He's doing some renovation at his, at his business about a block away. Jeff presented this at the last meeting. We put it on public display, and there was no comment on the public display. Is there any questions before we move forward? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for final approval.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio?
Yes.
Mayor Longe?
Yes. Item F is Resolution 2022 R1203. It's a resolution for non-hazardous waste disposal agreement with Prairie Ridge Landfill Incorporated for construction and demolition disposal. Is there any questions? This was put on the, for public display at the last meeting. There was no comment. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ward?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio?
Yes.
Mayor Longe?
Yes. Item G is Resolution 2022 R1204. It's a resolution authorizing the appropriation for maintenance costs of streets and highways for fiscal year of 2023 for final approval. This, again, was put on public display with no comment from the public. At this time, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Genizio. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Mayor Longe?
Yes. Item H, Resolution 2022 R1205, Resolution Authorizing Appropriation of Supplemental Project Costs for Streets and Highways for Fiscal Year 2023 for Final Approval. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Roll call.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Genizio?
Yes.
Mayor Longe?
Yes. Item I is Resolution Yes. Item I is Resolution 2022 R12-11, it's a resolution confirming the meeting dates for calendar year 2023 for final approval. We are required by law to publish our meetings in advance before the fiscal year begins. That doesn't mean that these meetings can't be changed to a later date, but these are more or less for the media to make sure that they can cover the dates when we're going to have our meeting. And if we do change them, there are, the Illinois statute tells you how many days or hours that you must give notice before you make a change or call a meeting. Is there any questions? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Still moved.
Moved by Commissioner Ward. Second. Seconded by Commissioner Carnes. Roll call.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Genesio?
Yes.
Mary Longe.
Yes. Is there any other business to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we'll start off with Commissioner comments with Aaron.
Nothing, sir, except I wish everybody a happy and prosperous new year.
Exactly what I heard.
Same.
Uh, well, yeah, I'll get to it. No, 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 no.
Uh, yeah, I want to thank all of our city workers for all busting her tail since Friday last week. My department's been really busy with breaks and everything else. I won't speak for these guys. They can do that, but kudos to all of them. They, they've been working hard, so, and can you have, you know, thoughts and prayers for Jill and her family also?
Mike?
I'll be repeating some of the things. I appreciate everything the city workers do, all the departments. I know we had the fire department out for, I think, seven hours in Pinkyville fighting that fire in those sub-zero temperatures. And I just really appreciate all they do for the community. Like to congratulate Mr. Ziegler on things getting better for you and your families. Thanks for all you've done. Also condolences to Jill's family, lost her mother. And also just want to wish everyone, I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and God bless them for this coming new year.
Bob?
Yes, wish everybody a Happy New Year. Congratulations, Brian. I also want to make mention of our workers. They do a good job. I drove around town today and people are using other people's driveways when it's not possible that they can get their vehicles out of the streets. And if they do, it helps us out, very much so if it's possible. I know sometimes it's, it's not logical that they do that. They have no other place, but if it's all possible, it helps us out a great deal.
Ruth?
Um, just my condolences to Jill and her family.
Okay, Happy New Year to everybody. And I, my sympathy goes out to Jill. I know that she was very, very close to her mother and our thoughts and prayers go out to her. I do want to say that we had the filing and everybody here at this table has opposition for the next election. And I want to wish every, everyone good luck in the campaign. I do want to clear up one thing. My opponent has put out the fact that I'm going to make $20,000 next year as mayor. And I want to clear that up and I will clear up every discrepancy that's made during this campaign. But basically, my, my, our, the new council mayor will get $16,308 a year and not, not the $20,000 that he stated in the newspaper. And also, the commissioners will get about $9726. And these are set by state law at least 180 days before the election. And as a mayor, it's my responsibility to bring ideas and legislative ideas to you as a council, but I want the citizens of this city to know that nothing's enacted for anything in this city without it going through the council as a, as a vote. So did I bring the, the idea to the council? I certainly did. Because back in 2019, and Pete, I'll have all this for you laid out. 2019, we adjusted the salaries that hadn't been adjusted since 1996. So, you know, we were way behind the curve. And if you look around at some other mayors, especially, a town our size would be Carterville, their mayor makes $35,000 a year. The commissioners are aldermen there. I don't know exactly what they make, but anyway, yes, I did bring the proposal to the council, but every council member here had, had to vote or either abstain from the vote. And Mike, you voted for it at, at one point and then turned around and abstained from the vote.
I never voted for it.
I, I know. I'm, I'm saying you abstained from the vote, but you voted for it and then, and then changed your vote.
In 19, though, I never changed it. In 19, I voted for it. I did it this time.
That's right.
As we were asking. So on the first one, I did. The second one, I did.
So anyway, I just want to, I just want, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows what the proper salaries are for, for the people moving forward. With that said, we will move to the audience and see if anybody has any comments. Jeff, you had a comment.
Yeah, good question. So we, in our November 30th issue, and, and let me start off before I say anything. I do want to thank the City of Ducoy and especially the Fire Department for all the help that they gave in the fire that was next to our building this past week. The fact that our building is still standing is just a miracle. So, you know, the City of Ducoy's Fire Department was a big part of saving that and the rest of the block there in downtown Pinkyville. So again, thank you. Anyway, so what I wanted to address is the mayor is quoted in our November 30th issue from that prior meeting, basically saying that that's not our doing. That's the formula the assessor goes through with the state of Illinois in talking about the increases in the Ducoy tax bills. And you continued to say people are blaming the City of Ducoy on these high tax bills when in fact, we might have been a little bit of the culprit. And then, you know, basically you're talking about how it's, it's late at the assessor's office or at the county offices. And from doing some research, what we've been able to glean is from tax year 2020, from the fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2021, the bond for, or I'm sorry, the line item for the City of Ducoy for the pensions did go up by 33,000, just shy of $33,900. So it did increase, and a lot of that is due to extra lines, IMRF, and some different things that were included for the City of Ducoy that weren't there or didn't have any money assessed to in prior year. That leads me to the question to talk about the taxable general obligation bond series 2021. The new bond passed under home rule back in June of 2021 has essentially created a new line item on the Ducoy residence tax bills at a rate of .9657, equaling what it looks like the money that's going to be drawn in from that for the city, for the pensions, is going to be $482,323.30 for tax year 2021. That bond doesn't expire till 2040, is my understanding. So the residents of the City of Ducoy are essentially, you know, that they're going to be billed for this every year until 2040. So I guess my question is, Mayor, do you stand by the statement that the increase in the tax bills wasn't due to the City of Ducoy, even though this bond passed under home rule is the giant difference in the tax bills for the residents of Ducoy?
Well, I said that we were somewhat of, somewhat of the culprit, and, and we were. But if you look at the, at the cash value of a home in 2020 versus what the cash value of the home was for taxes for 2022, it looks like that the average cash value of that home went up about 15.5%. So if you, and don't, don't think about the 9.8 multiplier that was put on. Go back to 2020 and 2021 and look what the multiplier was there. And if your cash value of your home went up 15.5% and the multiplier stayed the same, the taxes still would have went up. So for instance, now we have passed a budget with, with no increase to our tax levy, which the average person on the street thinks, okay, our taxes won't go up for the City of Ducoy next year. But in fact, if the assessor raises the taxes on our fair cash value of our home and the multiplier goes, is, is the same, the taxes will go up. So.
And it does show that there was an increase of just shy of $33,900 outside of the bond. But again, the bond raised the taxes for the residents of Ducoy by $482,323.30.
Right.
That was the bulk of the jump in the tax bills. Is that accurate?
Uh, yes, that, that's accurate. But you have to take into consideration, and Chuck Novak has all those numbers for you and will share them with you, is that we on the police and fire pension was only funded at about 35 to 38% on one and about 42% on the other. And Illinois state law says that by the year 2040, you have to be 90% vested or 90% funded.
Yeah.
So what was happening through the years is we weren't only getting a request for what we needed for our current people, but we were also getting a request what we need for all the retirees that's coming on to the program or that's already in the program. So we elected and we sat down and we talked about this, and this was a complete council decision. We had our public hearings, which nobody, you know, which nobody attended.
We were there.
Okay, yeah. We, and we ended up borrowing the money for somewhere north of 2.5%, which if now we would do it, that figure would be somewhere north of 5%, which would cost a lot more money. So we were forced to either do one of two things. Either raise our property taxes by 25 or 30% in order to offset what both of the payments would be, the current payment versus what our backlog payment would be.
Yeah.
Or to go and borrow $7.2 million and do it at a cheap interest rate. And I think the figures will show, and I think Ruth has those figures, will show you that over a period of 20 years, it will save the City of, what is it, a million or a million and a half dollars, Ruth?
I don't remember exactly, but I can get you that.
But it's there. But, but, but we've got all the, I mean, we've got everything that you want, Jeff, to take a look at that. And I mean.
And I guess that, that's my question is, is saying that the bulk of the tax increase lies at the assessor's feet, do you, do you think in, in light of the bond that that's a fair and accurate statement?
Well, based on the, based on the fact that we had to go out and borrow $7.2 million on past administrations that, that have, that haven't properly funded our police and fire pension, I think that's an accurate statement for, for the current line item. Now, for the other line item, I've always said we were, we were somewhat of a culprit, and we are. I mean, the culprit is that, you know, we had to go out and borrow $7.2 million to, to shore up our pension. And there's a website where you can look and find out where all these other municipalities are as far as funding. And now, since we've done what we've done, you know, we're at about 90%. We're, we're exactly where we're at. So, I mean, did, did we do the right thing? I, I mean, I think we did the right thing. The commissioners voted for it. They think that they did the right thing. You know, only time will tell. But I can tell you that, you know, when 2040 comes and all these other towns around haven't, haven't put in the money that we put into our police and fire pension, you know, the state of Illinois is going to come after them at some point. And they're going to say, hey, you're, you know, you're going to have to pony up. And I mean, I would much rather us come up with $7.2 million now and pay for it over a period of 20 years. And, you know, if somebody comes in and says, well, you know, I'm going to eliminate property taxes if I'm elected. Well, show me where you can eliminate that. Because this bond here goes out for 20 years. And everybody at this table knew that we were going to have to have, we were going to have an obligation of that. And that extra money that we had to put in year after year after year in order to catch up on, on our previous money that was not properly funded over those years, were, was eaten into our reserves. And eventually, I mean, you know, eventually we'd run out of money. And it's easier to pay as you go and have to pay all at one time. So, I mean, you know, my comment was that we were part of the culprit, and we are, you know. And, you know, did I like, did I like going out and borrowing $7.2 million? I did not. I don't like property taxes. I hate property taxes. But, you know, we have police and fire in this town, and those same fire people went over and fought that fire in Pinkyville.
Absolutely.
And, and believe me, when they decide they want to retire, they want their money. And as an elected official, and all of us here at the table as an elected official, you know, we think that that's important for them to have that retirement. And that's.
And that's not in question. It's, it's just the fact of the statement, putting it back on the county, doesn't seem to play out when you look at the numbers.
But, but you know, but you know, he didn't, well, and it's not going to play out on the numbers. But the bottom line is, we had to do what we had to do. And we, yes, we were the culprit. We were part of the culprit. But, you know, what I, what I wanted the assessor to understand was the fact, you know, people were called over to the assessor's office and the assessor wasn't giving them the, the answer. And they were telling the assessor to call me. Well, the assessor knew what the answer was, but the assessor didn't, didn't pop up and say, well, you know, you know, we're part of the culprit too. You know, we, we raised your cash value by 15.5% over the last two years. You know, your taxes were going to go up some. They may not went up what they are now. But, you know, it is what it is. I mean, it is.
The, and one, one quick follow-up question. So the money being collected, and I don't know if you've received that from the county yet. I know the second tax payments due at the end of this week.
We've already got one payment.
Okay. So my question is, is that money going straight to debt retirement with the bond? Or is it going in, are you putting it into an interest-bearing account? What, what is happening with that money?
Every, every dollar that we get from that payment, which is a $482,000, goes towards that bond payment. There is a schedule that we have to do. And I think we, don't we make two payments a year? We make one payment a year?
That's one payment.
Okay, it's 408. And, and after three years, that actually goes down a little bit. Okay? So every, every penny that we're getting off of that tax for that bond issue is going directly to pay for that bond.
Fair enough.
And if, and, and, and Jeff, you don't have to foil you this stuff. All you got to do is pick up the phone and call, and call Ruth. We're more than happy to give you any document that you want. We have absolutely nothing to hide with this thing. We were upfront from the very beginning with this thing. We told everybody that we were going to have to borrow $7.2 million, and we did. And, you know, just like right now, we're going after a $4.2 million bond issue for, for some projects for, for Chuck. And I could tell you right now, our bond rating went from an A minus to an A, which helped us. But I'm going to tell you that that interest rate ended up being 4.14, which is almost double what we borrowed a year ago for these bonds. So again, is it a good decision? You know, when you make a financial decision, you sit there and you have to make it based on the facts and the figures that you've got in front of you. And when we came here in 2015, everybody at this table would tell you, when we came here in 2015, this city was in very, very bad, dire financial shape. And you can take a look at our audits from 2015 until the current year. And I can tell you, I hope these people that sit here are proud of what we've done. Because the people of Ducoy have a better place today financially for this town. And if you look at our record for taxes over the years, there have been some, some years that we have not raised taxes at all. There have been times where we've raised taxes at 4.5%, 3.5%, 4.9% because under Illinois law, anything over 5%, you have to have a public hearing. And we've been cognizant of that. But we stepped up to the plate and we said, our police and fire deserve to be treated right at retirement. And we did not. And we did not want people that are currently on retirement, because, you know, the stock market took a hell of a hit for a lot of pensions over the last year. Stock market was down 20%. So these pensions in these, these communities that are only now funded at 40, 40%, where do you think their portfolio is now? They're in worse shape, and they may never come back. I mean, you know, they may not get that complete 20%. So what I asked you is to go back, if you're going to research this, go back, get on this website that shows where every community in Southern Illinois is at on their police and fire pension. And I think you're going to be surprised that there's going to be a lot of towns around Southern Illinois that are not funded very well.
And, and again, my question is not the bond, my question is the, the statement that was made a couple of meetings back, that, that's all I'm addressing. The need for the bond, I totally understand.
You know, and, I mean, did I, did I, uh, did I embellish a little bit? Maybe I did. I, you know, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I'm a mayor. You know, I'm trying, you know, we, we try to sell what, you know, what, what, what we want. But the bottom line is that, yes, we were the culprit, and I still stand behind that we were part of the culprit. But again, I, you know, I want, I want the tax assessor to, to stand up and say that he's part of it too, because he raised the, you know, he raised the cash value on a home 15 to 15 and a half percent, and it, your property taxes would have went up. And, I mean, go, go back and figure that. You know, go back and look at your taxes, what, what, you know, if, if anybody lives in, you don't live in Ducoyne, you live in Pinkyville.
No, I'm in Perry County, but not Ducoyne.
Yeah, but go, I, I mean, go back and look at somebody's taxes, I mean, you know, that's free of information, you can go back and look at anybody's taxes. Go back and look, look at somebody's taxes and, 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 and look at it from 2019, 20, and 21, and find out how much the tax assessor raised that cash value versus what, what the taxes would be if the multiplier down at the bottom of the page would have stayed the same. And, you know, we're both culprits. I mean, you know, he's got, he's got to do what he needs to do to meet his state requirements. As a mayor and as a city council, we have to do what we have to do to make sure that our obligations are met as, as public officials.
Fair enough. Well, I appreciate your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anything else? Jeffrey?
Just a moment for a few compliments. Commissioner Ward, fire department is brilliant. Your fire department is amazing. And the ability for all of the communities to pull together and respond, um, is a thing of beauty to watch. Uh, and your, if your fire department is amongst the best, period. While I'm up here and since Brian is here, I want to publicly thank him. We kind of pushed him pretty hard to get Division Street done, and he knew he was under the gun and he got it done. So the guy that really is to be thanked for getting Division Street done before the, before the weather set in is sitting right there. I also want to thank, I don't know if she's sitting down, but I can do it anyway, Ruth, because Ruth tolerates all of the stuff that I add to her list of all these projects that we put through, and she does a fine job of keeping up. And, and sometimes she has to kind of set me straight, but I appreciate that. I appreciate being able to work with your staff. Uh, and Aaron, you too, I appreciate you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I add that we appreciate you, Jeff, and what you do for the city.
Is there anything else to be brought before the council? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Carnes? Seconded by Commissioner Ward, roll call?
Commissioner Carnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner Genesio?
Yes.
Mayor Longey?
Yes.